And we've got Dawson Phillips, who serves as our research and policy coordinator. Just a quick note, folks, we are recording this call. What we will do is maybe go ahead and pause the recording as we embark into our Q and A portion of our session today, just so folks feel quite comfortable with sharing any questions, concerns that they might have about the November twentieth meeting. I understand that some folks can have some concerns about recording, so we will pause or stop the recording for the Q and A, but we are recording this session just so it can serve as a resource to anyone who's not able to attend today. So I hope that is okay. But the intention for the session today is just to walk you through what's happening on November twentieth, why it matters for our communities and how you can participate. And like I mentioned, I've got two of my colleagues here. Thank you so much, Juliana and Dawson, who will be helping me in covering some portions of the presentation today. But before we jump right into it, I want to briefly cover a few details about Airlines Houston. In case you don't know what we do, we are a nonprofit organization. Our core belief is quite simple. Everyone has a right to breathe clean air, and we do that through research, education, and advocacy. And a big part of our work is supporting communities like yours to understand environmental decisions and to take meaningful action when it comes to pollution and public health. With that, I want to quickly go over the agenda today. We'll begin by providing an overview of what's happening on November twentieth, the TCEQ public hearing. Juliana will provide an explanation of SB seven six three as well as SB twenty three fifty one. We'll talk about some of the key messaging and guidance for public comments. Dawson will help clarify some of the technical aspects of what we are urging TCEQ to do, just so you understand exactly how all of this works and what we're asking for. We'll talk about some participation options and how you can prepare and submit the most effective public comments, and we'll take some questions towards the end, and we'll close it out. All right, so let's go ahead and talk about what is happening at the TCEQ meeting on November twentieth. So TCEQ is holding a public hearing because the agency is proposing changes to the Texas Administrative Code, specifically thirty TAC Chapter one one six, which of course is a mouthful, but what that means is that particular portion of the Texas Administrative Code is what governs how air permits are issued for new construction or for modifications. That's for existing structures and facilities applicants that might have applied for an air permit. These changes are required in order to implement two new laws that were passed during the 2025 Texas Legislative Session, which are the SB seven six three as well as the SB twenty three fifty one. And TCEQ must also update the State Implementation Plan, also known as SIP, to stay consistent with the federal EPA requirements. So all of this to say, what it really means is TCEQ is basically deciding how strongly or weakly it will apply these new laws as it pertains to concrete batch plants. The proposed rulemaking adds a new requirement which would require TCEQ to conduct a protectiveness review of concrete batch plant standard permits at least once every eight years. And the other one is the rulemaking also basically adds Section one one six, which comes into play if TCEQ amends the standard permit in the future. That section gives TCEQ the option to require the company to use any new stricter permit conditions if they have not started construction yet. But that is up to TCEQ to require the applicant to do so. The law as it states right now does not mandate that as a given. It's really up to TCEQ on whether or not they're going to exert their authority to have the applicant apply those new and stricter permit conditions. So that's kind of what is being discussed, and of course Juliana will provide some more details about those two laws. Just to quickly note, this hearing that is taking place on November twentieth at 2:00 P. M. is a hybrid meeting, which means that you can attend in person or you could watch it virtually online. And the in-person location is taking place at the TCEQ headquarters in Austin. And we'll talk more about how, what Airlines Houston is doing and how we are supporting you to try to comment at this meeting as well as just, you know, participate in a variety of ways. Okay. All right, let's talk about why all of this matters. Why is it important that we pay attention to this? This hearing matters because concrete batch plants do release particulate matter, dust, diesel emissions, and silica particles that worsen asthma. They could also worsen heart and lung diseases and could absolutely impact quality of life, especially for vulnerable populations like children, elderly, pregnant women, and people that are living with chronic illnesses. But there's also a bigger regulatory issue here. For nearly two decades, concrete batch plants permits in Texas have barely changed. Even though pollution science and monitoring technology have advanced quite a bit, but we're hoping that with these two laws that were introduced earlier this year, it's going to create an opportunity for stronger protections, which is what we're hoping that TCEQ will choose to interpret, implement, and enforce them in the way that they were recommended by the folks that proposed them. So because this is a rulemaking hearing, your comments do not just go into a black hole. Every comment becomes part of the official record and requires a written response from TCEQ. That means that your voice has the power to push TCEQ towards stronger health protections and more accountability. And with that, I will pass it on to Juliana, who will cover the two laws. Take it away, Juliana.
Hello, I'm Juliana, and I thank you, everybody, for being here with us tonight. I'm just gonna cover what SB seven sixty three does. Thank you, Reeve. You did a good job earlier, kind of, kind of like basically going over what they do, so that was good. Thank you. And I'll just, I guess, kind of reiterate. So SB seven sixty three was passed this legislative session at the Texas Capitol by Senator Alvarado. It would require the TCEQ to review, well, for some context, in order for a concrete batch plant to operate in Texas, it must first receive a standard air permit by the TCEQ. And the TCEQ, I believe, is required to update their standard air permits every ten years. But currently, they don't have a requirement where they have to review their standard permit during a certain amount of time. So this bill makes it so that they're now required to review the standard air permits that they give out to these facilities every eight years. The protectiveness reviews are a way for TCEQ to ensure that the standard air permit regulations that they have actually protect public health and the environment. So that's a good thing. That's what makes this legislation so impactful. And it creates for a potential for stronger environmental protections in the future and as well as more stringent oversight on the regulations that are put on these facilities. And then for SB twenty three fifty one, so there are instances where a concrete batch plant has received their permit maybe years ago, but haven't commenced construction since then. And in the case that the TCEQ has updated their standard permit, which is usually done to be more stringent on emission controls, under SB twenty three fifty one, the TCEQ now has the authority to require a concrete batch plant that, for example, has an old permit but hasn't commenced construction to now adhere to the newer permit instead of the outdated one. So it closes a loophole where companies would build under outdated rules. This makes sure that like any company operating in 2020, this helps ensure, sorry, because they can require them. They're not, it's not an automatic, they're able to, they're all required to adhere to a new standard. It's that they are able to require them to. There's a difference. There's a distinction. But this helps. So now like a company running in 2025 could, who potentially would have been working under like a twenty, a twenty twenty air, air permit regulation code would now be able to adhere to a 2025 one, which helps the surrounding public's health.
All right. Thank you, Juliana. All right, so let's get back to talking about why public comments are critical. So laws only work if agencies choose to use the power that they've been given, which is why we often find, you know, concerns with TCEQ, the way that they're regulating, because they reluctantly regulate. Right? TCEQ's decisions are shaped heavily by what the public puts into the record, which is why we're urging folks to to comment. It really does help. Every single comment must receive a written response from TCEQ. So if you are planning on commenting, just know that TCEQ is required to respond to those comments. And strong comments can influence final language, which ultimately affects how protection, how much protection our communities could possibly get. So all of that to say, public comments are absolutely an important part of this process and can certainly help. So with that, let's talk about what Airlines is doing to support. So we're doing a couple of things. We are planning on attending the hearing in person. We are offering a free bus that will be picking up people from the Carl Walker Junior Center in Fifth Ward. The bus will be leaving at nine thirty A. M., and we'll talk a little bit more about logistics in some of the slides that are further down. All of this to say, we're providing a free bus for folks that can join, who would like to join us in person. We're also hosting a local watch party if folks would rather not go to Austin, because I understand it takes about three hours to get there, three hours to get back. It can be quite taxing on people's schedules, so if you'd rather attend locally, that's totally fine. We are hosting a local watch party at the Airlines Houston office at 2:00 P. M. for those that want to participate from Houston. And we are gonna be having at both the avenues, whether it's in person as well as our local watch party. We will be supporting folks in drafting out their comments. And I will also be sharing how exactly you can participate if you're planning on commenting, which I certainly hope you are, how you can do so in a moment. But first, let's talk about what exactly are we urging TCEQ to do? Not only are we urging them to, you know, definitely adopt those two laws in the way that they were meant and submitted by Senator Alvarado as well as Representative Bali to adopt both of those laws by TCEQ. We're also asking them to take further measures to fully protect communities, some of which I've listed here up on the screen. So TCEQ, we're asking them to treat these legislative changes as the floor, not the ceiling. They're good starting points, but TCEQ must strengthen how these laws are applied to protect public health in a meaningful way. We're also hoping that TCEQ uses its regulatory authority to prioritize public health when they're evaluating permits. That means they're centering health impacts, especially in communities that are facing cumulative pollution and not based on, you know, industry convenience is something that we've seen quite often, unfortunately. TCEQ must also enforce violations consistently and transparently, because too many facilities are operating on an honor system where they're expected to sort of self-report on violations, but why would they? Why would they want to self-report and pay penalties when they can just not do that, right? So it's really important that TCEQ conducts regular inspections, has clear oversight and consequences for violating permit conditions. TCEQ must either conduct inspections on a regular schedule or accept inspection results from other regulators if they're planning to opt out for that option. Because communities should not be forced to kind of police these facilities themselves. People have lives, they have jobs, they've got families. They should not be responsible for figuring out what any neighboring polluter might be putting out, what that smell might be. It should really not be their burden, which is kind of how it is right now. It's really up to communities to report violations, which again, I urge everyone to do if that is the case, but what we're saying is that burden should not lie on community members. That burden should be on TCEQ. Another thing that we're hoping is in overburdened neighborhoods, overburdened by pollution, that is, TCEQ should strongly consider denying new permits altogether. You know, when you're looking at multiple concrete batch plants in a particular area, clustered together, just adding another plant is really not safe. We're also hoping that TCEQ, if TCEQ does not deny a permit, then at the minimum, they're trying to strengthen the permit with enhanced pollution controls and stricter requirements. Like Juliana mentioned, under SB twenty three fifty one, TCEQ has the ability, but not the obligation, to require plants that have not begun construction to meet the newest stricter standards. Given that they have that ability to do so, we're urging them to leverage that ability and to require it. Because why wouldn't they, right? Because they have that authority, they must use it. And setbacks must be measured from fence line, not from the baghouse exhaust. Dawson will clarify that a bit, a bit more, so you have a better understanding of how that can be more protective for public health. We're also asking TCEQ that healthcare clinics should be explicitly recognized as affected parties, since OPEC already recommends this, and clinics do serve vulnerable populations and are directly impacted by pollution. They should also evaluate cumulative impacts. Many communities are facing not one, but several threats, whether it's a concrete batch plant, which is relevant to this particular hearing, but it could be other facilities as well. It could be like a petrochemical plant, could be rail yards, highways, other industrial sites, what have you. And permits should not be evaluated in isolation when pollution is experienced collectively. The last two is we're hoping that TCEQ will require fence line air monitoring and not self-reporting. And with regards to temporary batch plants, TCEQ must clarify what temporary actually means, just so communities can hold their neighboring temporary concrete batch plant accountable. All right, with that, I will hand it over to Dawson to clarify a few technical points. Dawson, take it away.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name's Dawson. I'm the Research and Policy Coordinator at Airlines Houston. Like Reeve said, these bills are an improvement, but they could be doing more. TCEQ could be doing more. So I'm gonna be covering a couple of the ways that we hope that TCEQ can improve these regulations, one of which is about how concrete batch plants are located. As of right now, there's a four hundred and forty yard setback distance, meaning that concrete batch plants have to be four hundred and forty yards away from the nearest residence, school, or place of worship. And the logic there is that that's far enough away that folks beyond that radius will not be experiencing the public health impacts of air pollution. There are a couple of problems with that, one of which is that air pollution is not limited to that four hundred and forty yards, and that's not enough space. That won't protect the folks in the surrounding neighborhoods. Another problem is that that four hundred and forty yards is measured from the baghouse exhaust, like Reeve mentioned earlier. That's the point of the actual concrete batch plant infrastructure, where a lot of the air pollution comes out. There are a couple of problems with that as well. One of which is that these concrete batch plants have a lot of diesel-powered engines. They have a lot of concrete trucks that go in and out of the facility that also emit not only fine particulate matter and air pollution, but also they toss up a bunch of dust. They're loud. They can be a real nuisance to folks living nearby. So as opposed to measuring four hundred and forty yards from the baghouse exhaust, we are calling on TCEQ to measure that four hundred and forty yards from the fence line of the facility, since that more accurately represents how people nearby will be experiencing the air pollution impacts. And in that way, that'll better, better protect the homes, schools, the daycares, the places of worship that are nearby to the concrete batch plant facility. Go to the next slide. Another thing that Reeve mentioned earlier, TCEQ needs to take into consideration the cumulative impacts of polluting facilities. As of right now, TCEQ reads an air permit application, and they say, okay, this checks all of the boxes for that certain type, for in this instance, a concrete batch plant. It checks all of the boxes that we require them, all the standards that we require these facilities to meet, and then it'll approve. However, that doesn't take into consideration that many communities have multiple industrial sites that are also polluting. We experience air pollution as a cumulative burden. We're breathing in air from all of the different sources of air pollution around us. So it doesn't make sense that TCEQ would be evaluating these facilities kind of in a vacuum without taking into consideration their context. And a single concrete batch plant maybe might not be the hugest air pollution burden, but what if you're living close to two or three or four of them? That can really accumulate, and that translates to a higher public health burden on the surrounding community. So that needs to be taken into consideration, which is why we're calling on TCEQ to take into consideration cumulative impacts and incorporate this into the new rules. The map on the right side of the screen, those are all of the concrete batch plants in the state of Texas. As you can see, they are clustered around urban centers. In particular, Dallas, Fort Worth, as well as the greater Houston area, have a lot of concrete batch plants. So considering these air permits the same way in these urban centers as you would anywhere else in Texas, it doesn't make sense. There are differences in the context of where these concrete batch plants are located that need to be considered. That need to be considered. If we go to the next slide, I have same map, but this time it's zoomed in on Harris County. Harris County has, estimates vary. This is a conservative estimate, one hundred and forty plus concrete batch plants. I've seen estimates up to one hundred and sixty, depending on what source you're looking at. Point is, there are a lot of concrete batch plants in Harris County in particular. And cumulatively, concrete batch plants in the county are considered to be a major source of air pollution, particularly fine particulate matter, which has a really sharp impact on public health. And not considering, when you're placing a new concrete batch plant in Harris County, not considering how many other types of facilities are in the area, it's not responsible for protecting public health. In addition, these concrete batch plants and similar facilities are disproportionately located in communities of color. So when TCEQ isn't taking into consideration the number of these types of facilities in a particular area, they're allowing that environmental racism, that injustice to continue and continue the disproportionate construction of concrete batch plants in communities of color. Yeah, next slide.
All right. Thank you, Dawson. Appreciate it. Just a couple more clarifications with regards to some of the things that we included in things that we're asking or urging TCEQ to act on. One thing that I brought up is the issue with self-reporting. I think I've alluded to this briefly, but I'll provide a bit more detail as to what exactly this is about. Right now, TCEQ largely relies on companies to either self-report violations or for community members to report violations, which then TCEQ will conduct inspections based on, only if they have the capacity to do so. And think of something like an odor. If you're smelling an odor, a terrible odor that's coming from a nearby facility, or you're seeing a lot of dust coming out of it, well, if you do report it to TCEQ or to Harris County Pollution Control, are they going to conduct an inspection right away, or are they gonna come a bit later? Regardless, you should absolutely report those violations and file those complaints. But TCEQ is relying way too much on either community members or on self-reporting violations and, you know, relying on residents to offer notices and to report problems. There are some counties out there, like Fort Bend County, that don't even have air monitors. So that again is a concern. It becomes essentially an honor system of sorts. So it really makes sense to ask TCEQ for fence line air monitoring that should be provided and acceptance of inspection data from other regulators, if that's again something that might be feasible, and a clear inspection schedule that TCEQ should be conducting on a routine basis to ensure the compliance, that applicants are actually meeting their emissions, and it should not be done on a self-reporting basis. All right, the other thing that I want to briefly talk about is temporary batch plants, temporary concrete batch plants. Just a quick note on these, temporary plants are not the main focus of this hearing, but I think it would be okay to mention with a few caveats. You know, of course, temporary plants are labeled temporary because they often operate, they should be operating either less than one eighty days or until a project ends. Quote-unquote. I'm using that in quotes. But how long could a project last if a project is, say, building a highway, which may take years? That means that your temporary batch plant could basically operate for more than one eighty days, right? So I think we can certainly ask TCEQ to provide some clarity on what temporary really means to prevent abuse. I think that is absolutely fair to do so in this meeting, but just be prepared that they may say, oh, we can't really comment on temporary batch plants because that is not the subject of this meeting. But I'm not gonna dissuade folks to bring that up, because I know there are some concerns specifically relating to temporary concrete batch plants. All right, these are a few photos of what a typical hearing looks like. But again, just bear in mind, this is happening at the Capitol, so the location is going to be of that, of TCEQ headquarters in Austin. But it's gonna be like any other meeting. So I just wanted to provide this, just so folks don't feel intimidated. Couple of note before you goes, you do not have to present your ID or offer any kind of personal information if you don't want to. If you are having any type of anxiety about commenting, please, please know that Airlines Houston staff will be there to support in whatever capacity you need us to, whether it's just to provide some emotional support, just to be there as you're heading up to comment. We can certainly do that. We can walk with you. If you need help drafting a comment, you're more than welcome to reach out to me if you'd like to draft a comment well in advance. We will also be providing some support as we're heading to Austin on the bus, if folks would like any assistance. And we will be doing the same for the watch party as well. There will be Airlines Houston staff that will be providing support to help folks draft up their comments. And the third point here up on the screen is regarding security. I'm not sure if we might have security. It's likely that there might be security on site. You know, we typically offer this as a no before you go for permit hearings. What I do wanna, the point that I want to make with regards to security is it has nothing to do with current administration. It's just a standard thing that TCEQ does anytime that there is a meeting like this. So expect to see some security there. And again, Airlines Houston staff will be available on site to help you write your comments. And your immigration status does not affect your right to comment. So if you do have concerns about that, I hope you take some solace in knowing that there should be no concerns with regards to your immigration status. And like I said, you do not have to provide your name. Um, you do not have to provide your name, your address, if that's something that you're not comfortable with, you could certainly use. An alias like Concern Citizen, um, and you are more than welcome to use Airlines Houston's address. Um, as you're trying to identify yourself. Couple of things on how to comment, um, effectively, uh, when you comment, we urge folks to keep it concise. And keep it answerable, um, I've already mentioned this, but I will say it again. T C E Q is required to respond to every comment, so, um. Uh, clarity, um, is a, uh, good tool to use, um, as you're drafting up your comment, um. We've provided a kind of a simple type of format on how you can write your uh, comment. You could begin by stating your concern as it is, um, it doesn't hurt to acknowledge progress since they are adopting. Two additional laws that are protective of um, um, public health in some regards, it doesn't hurt to acknowledge that progress, but. Um, uh, let's close it off with what T C E Q should be doing more to be more protective of public health. So that's kind of the format that we are recommending, uh, we, we do have a sample testimony up on the screen. You're welcome to take a photo of this, if you'd like a sample, but um, we will also be providing slides to. Anyone who registered, um, whether it's for the bus, um, the online, um, watch party that we're having locally here in Houston. As well as um, uh, you folks that have registered for uh, the prep session, so. Um, just know that you will have access to all the slides. Alright, a couple of things to avoid in your comments, um, uh, just so that they're not dismissed, uh, we avoid. Uh, we urge you to avoid mentioning any specific enforcement cases. Um, any um, specific ongoing contested case hearings, um. Avoid mentioning any specific facility or any permit numbers, um. I would urge folks to just sort of stick to policy, health impacts, the rule language, and the protections that we need. Alright, now this here slide, uh, is really important folks, so I, I wanna kind of, um. Draw your attention, if you need to kind of just, you know, shake off, uh, uh. Um, uh, and kind of, but in attention if you're experiencing it, uh, but please, please, this is really important. If you are planning on commenting on November twentieth, um, it is really important that you register. Um, and in order to register your, or to, to register your attendance or to speak. You have to email this email that's here up on the screen, that's rules@tceq dot texas dot gov. And you need to do this by tomorrow, okay, tomorrow is the deadline, um. What do you need to include in the email, you're going to need to include your name, um, and affiliation if you have one. Um, your email, your phone number, and whether or not you want to provide your overall comments. Um, T C E Q will email instructions, um, on November nineteenth, um, uh, on how you will be. Um, delivering your comments, I think they'll just be sort of general instructions on how to get to, to the meeting, or, um, if you're planning on. Uh, delivering your comment, um, virtually, so. Expect to receive the instructions on November nineteenth, but you will not be receiving instructions if you do not email. This particular email here by November eighteenth, it is critical, um, to, to not, um. You know, miss the step, it is really important that you do do this, again, I'll call this out, I've been calling it out in all the emails that I've been sending out to folks. But I wanna draw particular attention to this, again, I'm saying this once more, you will not be able to comment. If you do not, um, send out this email, um, you will not even be able to register your attendance. All of which, of course, counts, to do so, you have to email rules@tceq dot texas dot gov. By tomorrow, and please do include your name, affiliation, email, phone, and whether or not you want to provide overall comments. And that, that applies for whether you are planning to do that virtually or in person, okay? Alright, um, with that, we'll keep it moving, if you are planning on just, um, uh, attending, um. Uh, or watching the live stream of the event, you could do so using this link that's here up on the screen, again. I will be sharing my slides via email, so you will have access to, um, uh, this link, but. It, here on the right, um, if you've seen this flyer, uh, the Q R code that says, um. Uh, live stream on top of it, that's the one, you can scan that code and it will directly take you to the. Uh, team's link, uh, that, um, uh, where T C E Q will be live streaming this particular meeting. So if you just wanna watch, you're not planning on commenting, but just wanna kind of wanna follow along, um, that's what I would recommend, um, for you to use. Alright, um, with that, let's cover logistics for, uh, the November twentieth meeting. For the bus riders, uh, we are meeting at Carl Walker Junior Center, that's. Um, on forty-three hundred Noble Street B, Houston, um, in Texas, seven, seven, zero, two, zero. Pickup is at nine thirty, the bus will leave at ten o'clock sharp. So please, uh, we are urging folks to arrive by nine thirty, so there are no delays. You can expect to return, um, back to Houston anywhere between six to seven P M, we don't have a, an exact time, but. Um, you should be back no later than seven P M. Um, also note that there will be secure parking space at the Carl Walker Junior Center, so if you're worried about that, please don't be, um, your car will be just fine. Uh, we do have wheelchairs that we're bringing with us, so in case that's something that you would be interested in. Um, just let us know, we will have two wheelchairs that we are bringing with us, there will also be snacks available on the bus as well as water. Um, so if you are concerned about, hmm, whether or not I should bring some snacks, don't worry about it, we got you covered. Um, there will be snacks and water on the bus. As for the watch party, uh, like I said, it's happening at the Airlines Houston office, uh, which is at twenty-five twenty, um, Caroline Street. Uh, the meeting starts at two P M, so we are urging folks to maybe get, uh, to the office, um, maybe a couple of minutes earlier, just so you don't miss anything. And, uh, uh, it's gonna be a really fun watch party, uh, from what I'm hearing from the folks that are organizing this, there are lots of games. There are, uh, there's gonna be food, um, uh, you know, there's gonna be a lot of fun things, so. Um, there will also be, uh, staff providing support when drafting comments, um, for both avenues, uh, for the bus riders as well as. For the folks that are going to be attending the watch party. Alright, some, um, uh, key takeaways, um, for, um, uh, the meeting. Just bear in mind, folks, of course, you know, the laws that Juliana covered, um, uh, they do matter, um, but they only protect our communities. If T C E Q applies them strongly, um, as they should. And, um, another thing to bear in mind is your comments do influence policy, so please feel empowered in that. Um, it is important to, uh, participate in this manner, uh, because all of this, again, ultimately does help. To create a safer environment for all, and, um, uh, you know, your voices do help shape what protections. Could possibly look like in Texas, and we are absolutely here to support you in that process. And, um, with that, wanna thank everyone for listening, um, we do have about, uh, twenty minutes for Q and A. Um, as you're thinking about your questions, you're welcome to use the chat or just come off mute, um, uh. I think there should be a raising your hand feature if you'd like to, um, you know, just ask your questions. Um, but as you're thinking about that, there are a couple of things here on the screen, um, I do have my email here. Um, Juliana's email, if you have any questions for Juliana, we've got Dawson's email as well. Um, we also have our newsletter, Q R codes, if you are not receiving our newsletter, I urge you to scan the Q R code. So you can subscribe to that, and we also urge everyone to follow us on social media. We are on a variety of platforms, whether it's Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube. And X, um, and I think we're called, um, Air Alliance, um, H O U on all of those platforms. And with that, I'll pause to see if there are any questions.